Good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Daniel Honigz. I'm an eighteen-year teacher here at Columbia Heights Public Schools. I taught three years down in our middle school and the remaining fifteen at Columbia Heights High School. I teach mathematics, the best subject in the world. If you haven't embraced it, embrace it now. I'm proud that I'm also the Columbia Heights Teachers Union Local Number Seven, Ten, Columbia Heights Federation of Teachers, Education Minnesota, and I'm proud to be their president. So, it's my grand pleasure to welcome you all tonight to our Board Candidate Forum. And I will go ahead, we had, we extended invitations to all seven candidates. Only four responded to our summons, so to speak. And so, I'd like to recognize the other three people who are not here tonight. And those would be Janet Kendall, Michael Nowitzki, and Joanna Stark. And of course, here tonight, starting on the left is Hala Asamrai, William Gauthier,
Correct.
Molly Lewis, and Laura Palmer. And I'm just a figurehead here. The real work will be done by this wonderful woman sitting next to me. So, I'd like to introduce to all of you Tammy Deem. Tammy Deem is an attorney and shareholder at Winthrop &amp; Weinstein, working with businesses, real estate transactions, and governance and compliance. She served on the Columbia Heights City Council from two thousand and three to two thousand and fourteen. And she is a member of the Columbia Heights community and the mother of three Columbia Heights High School graduates, James, Braden, and Kira, and I had the pleasure to have both Braden and Kira in class myself. So, without further ado, I will turn things over, I'm sorry, one announcement. We'll, the cards that are out, they will continue to be collected until eight o'clock. Mr. John Frye, our Director of Special Services in the back, will be collecting them. So, if you have one, you can just put your hand up in the air, he'll come around. Those will then be sorted into categories and topics by Xenus Tenvik, our Director of Teaching and Learning. And then, those will then be given to Tammy over here, and Tammy will choose which questions to read. So, Tammy will go ahead and explain a little bit more about how things will go on. So, without further ado, Tammy Deem.
Thank you very much, and welcomed, everybody who is here in attendance. And thank you to our candidates who have chosen to spend their time with us this evening. This is an important opportunity for members of our community to learn more about each of you and what you potentially could bring to the school board and your service to the community. As Daniel mentioned, our forum tonight will consist of a series of questions that I will ask each of the candidates. I will ask each of you to answer the same question, and you will be provided with approximately ninety seconds to answer each of the questions. We do have someone who will be timing the answers, and she will hold up a card to let you know that your time is coming to an end. And if you then see the bright red one, that means that you need to stop because your time is up, and we will be moving on to the next candidate and the next question. We will ask the questions in a rotating format. So, I will start with the first question, which I will ask Hala to respond to first. The second question will be William as the first respondent, and we'll follow along in that format so that each of you has a chance to be the first and the second and the third and the fourth. As Daniel also mentioned, we do encourage members of the audience to complete questions at any time during the forum. Those will be collected, and we will start to add those questions as we go. So, the first question for each of you, please tell us briefly about yourself and why you have chosen to be a candidate for the Columbia Heights School Board position. Hala, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So, my name is Hala Asamrai. I'm a teacher, and I have my master's in education and my doctorate, and got my principal license, and I feel very passionate about education. I've devoted my career to it. I've served on a board of a charter school in the past, and I was elected onto this school board two years ago, and I've really, really enjoyed my time here. And I decided to run again because I'm really eager to continue serving the students, families, and community in this way by using my passion and my expertise to serve.
Thank you. William?
My name is William Gauthier. I graduated from Columbia Heights. My two sons graduated from Columbia Heights. They're, they're out of the house by now, obviously. And I worked for the city of Minneapolis. I was the fleet maintenance manager there for about eighteen years. So, I've dealt with budgets and that. What got me involved here is a group called Community and Parents Advocating for the Children. And I started attending meetings there, and it became apparent that there were some issues that needed to be resolved in Columbia Heights. So, really what I'm after, or what seek as goals, if I was fortunate enough to be elected to the board, was to make sure that we have a learning and working environment free of harassment and violence. Also, what I'm after is to get the children that live in Columbia Heights to go to school in Columbia Heights. And there's one thousand six hundred and seventy-three of them. That's forty percent of the kids not attending the school district that lives here. And, and final, I'd like to really work with the board and administration to get Columbia Heights Policy Four Thirteen involved. Thanks.
Molly?
Thank you. I'm Molly Lewis, and I am also a Columbia Heights graduate. And I have four children in the district, I guess. One just graduated, so that would be three now. I'm pretty passionate about education as well. I work in social services. I've been working with Hennepin County for about eighteen years. Currently, I'm in a parent support outreach program, and we work with families. I work with families day in and day out, and I think just, in, in summary, twenty-two years of experience working with children and families. And so, my passion is to make sure that the children in this district are never overlooked and that we're making best decisions for them every day.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I'm, I'm Laura Palmer. I've lived in Columbia Heights for about twenty-six, twenty-seven years. I've had four children go through the school district. I still have two currently attending, so it's been pretty exciting the last few years with a lot of the new changes with the academy and, and the arts programs. It's been really, really incredibly amazing. Earlier, when I was first involved, when I first saw election, there were some things that I really didn't quite understand on how it all worked. And it was difficult at the time to try to know the questions you needed to ask. So, my main goal for running in the first place was to, was to find out how it all works and where the opportunities are. And there's an amazing amount of opportunities that are happening. The special education has also been a, something that I, I've been most fascinated with and how we can make sure that those children live up to their potential, and that's kind of where I like to concentrate, so.
Thank you. William, we'll start with you for the second question. There are many ways that people can be involved in the school district and with the schools in general. Can you please describe some of your involvement in recent years?
Not much in recent years, more, more involved when the kids were attending the school. But in the last few years, not too much, until, like I said, I got involved when I retired. I started getting back involved in the community. And so, I, I joined this group and learned a lot. And the biggest complaint was harassment and violence, and that's what I want to deal with.
Molly?
Thank you. I currently work with some of the other parents in the district, as well as the special ed director, on a special ed parent advisory council. I think there's going to be a lot of exciting work ahead in the next couple of years. I also volunteer, I'm not officially a member of a PTO, but my children have been in three different schools for the past several years, at least six years. And I try to volunteer at some of the PTO events as much as I can and put some time in there. I also do volunteer coach in the wintertime, which is not a school sanctioned event, but I do work with the youth in that level as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Laura?
Well, I really think that there's always more involvement that I, that I could have. I'm certainly involved with my, my children's activities within it comes to concerts and their, the art fairs and things like that. There is a lot of background that I do as far as research on trying to find maybe another way to be able to help the kids. So, that's primarily a lie. Wish I had more hands on, but at three AM in the morning, pretty much the research is all I can do. So, that's pretty much it. Pass on.
And Hala?
Well, I guess the biggest way to be involved is when you're a parent and you're involved with your kids' activities in school. So, that is one of the biggest ways I've been involved outside of being on the school board for the last two years. I guess I could say I've enriched my experience here through my work with Minneapolis Public Schools. It's not in this community, but it's an adjacent community. It's given me another vantage point through which I can see what we're doing and how we can make things better for students. And it helps me kind of prioritize, excuse me, prioritize equity, excellence, and transparency in what we do.
Thank you. Molly, we'll start with you for the next question. Our school district, like our community, is rich with diversity. How would you, as a school board member, represent all community voices in your role?
Thank you. I do believe that that's probably one of my strengths in the, in the work that I've done. I've worked with extremely diverse populations over the last several years. And in speaking about diversity, I'm talking about whether it's measuring people by their abilities, capabilities, whether it's based on ethnic, religious, different things like that. I also am a child, am, am the parent of children that are African-American and also have some developmental disabilities. So, I think that that's one of the things that I do bring to the table in terms of looking after every, every child and meeting them where they're at.
Thank you. Thank you. Laura?
Isn't it amazing at how incredibly unique our district is? And the, the, all of the, the talents and experiences that the staff and the children and the families bring to the district. I value each and every one of those experiences, and we hope to create greater understanding. And I think we've been successful on so many, so many fronts. I don't, I don't make assumptions on anything. Dreams can be had by everybody, and they can be different. And life experiences brought into the schools, I, I, it, it really is pretty amazing. So, I, I don't make any assumptions.
Hala?
When, when we're on the school board, the most important thing is to represent everybody. It means every last person, not just the majority. And so, that's something that's very important to me, not just the people who I share characteristics with, everybody. And that means that I reach out to people in my community that I make myself available to, to hear their concerns. And similar to what Laura said, I try not to make assumptions. It's normal for the human brain to make generalizations, but it's really, really important to be willing to put everything aside and just look at the person for who they are and for what they're bringing to the table. We talk a lot in the world of education about tolerating diversity, and I truly don't believe in tolerating diversity. That's too low of a standard. It's really important to embrace it, to take it in, to look at it, look at the assets that diversity brings, and to use that to enrich what we're doing altogether. Melting pots just make a really icky, weird shade. Salad bowls are always nicer and more colorful.
Thank you. William?
I think Columbia Heights does a real good job on, on diversity. I don't go down that road. I don't look at people that way. I, I look at them as all equal. And we need to prepare them for be, becoming adults and being able to work in the outside private sector. And that should be our, our first goal. Like I said, I don't look at people, at, at what their backgrounds or that. That really is immaterial to me. What's, what really counts is that we educate these kids so they're ready to earn a good living. And that's, that's our focus. So, we can talk about it if you want, but my, my goal is to get, again, to, to get the kids that aren't in the district back in the district. We're losing twenty million dollars a year in revenue. With that money, we could give more classes, more teachers, and, and get these kids ready for, for life. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. We're now going to shift a bit and talk about some specific programs and, and opportunities. Laura, this question, we'll start with you. School districts across the state of Minnesota are being affected, and arguably negatively affected, by the special education cross-subsidy issue. What would you do or propose to do as a school board member to try and address this issue?
Well, that is something we have been addressing on a yearly basis. We have many discussions about that. Some of the things that we are currently doing is looking at if there is enough of a student population in a specific, that has a specific need, if there's a program that we can actually do in-house. The Anchor Program actually would be an excellent example of that. I'm really excited to also see that we're also going to be doing some life skills, which will also benefit our students. And from the way I understand it, that the dollars saving are absolutely tremendous. You know, we're, we're talking, you know, actual, you know, full-time employees and dollar savings, which is amazing. The other thing that we also do is we do collaboration through nine sixteen with other districts to be able to offer programming that might be too expensive to be able to actually do in-house. And that has also been of a tremendous benefit to our students, where you only need to hire staff for a short period of time, perhaps, as well as, as the higher need students where we can collaborate, what, you know, one student from one district, another from another district, and be able to, to do that on scale and economies. I have a lot more to say about it, but I only have nine seconds left.
Thank you, Laura. Hala?
Yeah, so that is something that we've been struggling with on the board, and everybody in the state has been, because it's a very real issue. And it, it drains the money from the general fund. Some things that we're doing to address it, we're collaborating with other districts, and we're trying to consolidate our efforts. We're trying to find efficiencies in-house, anything that, any corners we can cut. Hard decisions have to be made. And I believe anybody who's on the school board needs to be willing to make hard decisions. We don't get to be here because we do the easy work. We have to be willing to do the hard stuff. While all those decisions are being made, I believe it's really important to prioritize academics while still giving enough emphasis to the arts and athletics, because school is not just about academics. It's also about arts and athletics, because a well-rounded student will make a successful one. There are some things one can do to make things more efficient, looking at staff to have more than one license, bringing on additional staff who have more than one license so they can consolidate resources between schools and departments, sharing resources, things like that.
Thank you. William?
Special education, it's federally mandated, state mandated. They, they, Fed, State said they were going to supply forty percent of the costs. We're lucky to get fifteen percent. So, what does that mean to Columbia Heights School District? Well, if they up to their forty percent, that'd be a twenty-five percent increase. Anyway, long story short, we'd save a million dollars a year if, if they participated. What would I do if I get elected? I would try and work with all the other school boards, because this is, this is statewide, it's actually nationwide. It's ridiculous that they give these unfunded mandates. And, and they got a bigger pool to draw the money from. So, I would work with the state legislature and see if we can get them to hold up to forty percent. As far as education, it's very important. There's plenty of room for improvement in Columbia Heights. So, maybe we'll get into that a little later. But right now, I, my big concern is, is with these kids living, going out of district, so.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, so this special ed cross-subsidy is something we've been discussing at the board level for several years. At this time, we as a board have, like Hala said, made some really hard decisions that have had to been, be made. But we've worked really hard to make sure that the programming stays in place and remaining fiscally responsible. I think the piece that we need to continue to focus on is communicating to the public what's going on so that people can take that information. And I think that there's some members of our community who have done a great job of advocating at the state level so that that information doesn't get lost and that we continue to press on and hopefully get what we're needing. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Hala, we're back to you for our next question. From your perspective, what is one of the Columbia Heights programs that fulfills the worlds of opportunity for every learner?
Oh, just one. Okay. Ooh, okay. So, something I really like, and it's, okay, so maybe I'm cheating. It's not one program, but I love how at the high school, there are so many different options for the students. They get to have, to try their hand at so many different things. I've worked in a lot of different high schools as I am a high school teacher, and really, I haven't seen that. No Child Left Behind had a way of destroying all the extras, so to speak. And something I really, really appreciate here is the AP program is huge, has a lot of diverse, diversity in it. The students who are from diverse backgrounds are well-supported. It's not like where I've seen it in some other districts where they're in there to make the numbers look pretty, but then they're not supported. Just all the opportunities that the kids have at the high school, they're just astounding.
Thank you. William?
Just one program?
One program.
Okay. Well, then I'll pick the sports program. I think they offer a lot of after-school activities. They're very good. The people that are involved are very passionate about it. I think there's a seventy-two percent participation rate in the sports programs, the different ones. And, and that's good for the, for the students, that they can have, you know, interrelations, get to know each other better, and, and maybe be good at a sport, too, so.
Thank you. Molly?
I hope this counts as one program, but I would just focus on the special ed programming in Columbia Heights School District. I think that the school does a great job of collaborating with others within those areas, from the early childhood special ed to the pre-K, to the inclusion that we work on in this district, all the way up through the high school, and then to the transitions program. What I see is that our children are included and valued in the special ed program, and I don't necessarily believe that that happens in every district across the state. I think that that speaks volumes to our teachers, to the belief that they have and every student can learn, and the way that they work with them and include them in everything and every aspect of the learning during the school days.
Thank you. Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, it, just one. I actually have kind of three that I'd love to mention something about, so I'm just going to take license and say it. I love the Avid Program. The Avid Program is a great way of teaching kids how to be organized and take notes and be successful. And that's something that they will use throughout their entire, their entire life. I, I think that's great, and we have them at all the grade schools and at the high school and in the middle school. The engineering program, the engineering program is absolutely fabulous. I've had students in that. But the fun one is all of the programming that comes out of Blooming Heights. We have cooking classes that come out of there. We have reading classes. We have horticulture. There's just so much available in that little bit of space. And the, and the, the benefit for these children to learn how to grow things and, and learn all about the science, I think is really pretty amazing. And it's not a very high-cost budget either, which is amazing. So, I think we get a lot out of it.
Thank you.
Oh, college in the schools, AP. Well, I can go on and on.
I think that's more than one, but you saved up in your time.
Yeah, I did, I did say I was going to cheat there. Yes.
William, we're going to start with you for the next question. If you were elected as a school board member, how would you support the mission of the Columbia Heights Public Schools?
Well, the main mission should be to represent the taxpayers of the school district and make sure the schools are safe and adequate. I would definitely make sure the schools are safe. And then, then we'd have to look at the other activities. When I, when I say there's room for improvement, I noticed when I was looking over the literature that our math scores, they start out in fourth grade at about, you know, forty-seven, fifty percent. By eighth grade, they're down to about, you know, forty percent. And then by, by the time they hit twelfth grade, it's thirty-one percent rate of grade-level skills. And English is about the same. The state average is about fifty percent. So, we're, we're about ninety-eight percent below in both areas. So, I think we need to look at that and, and see if we can improve those programs.
Thank you. Molly?
Thank you. I believe that, you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to make sure that our kids are ready to, to be successful in life after high school, whether that's in a career or, or moving on to some sort of secondary education, if it, or post-secondary education, be it college, technical school, whatever it might be. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that every child has access to a good education. Some of the programs that we're currently doing and that I would continue to support is the personalized learning, making sure that we have the right technology in our schools, that we're continuing to grow that as, as the world around us grows. Making sure that we have small classrooms so that we're not, we're not forced to have them in the larger classrooms that some of our districts have. We, we're very fortunate in this district to have those class sizes that are really valuable. I think we can definitely work to improve that, but there, there is, when we look at across the metro area, we're doing pretty good. And again, continuing to advocate for more funding for our district so that we can do these programs.
Laura?
Well, our, our main focus, of course, is, you know, worlds of opportunity for every learner. Differentiated learning is, is definitely something that we have been really working at, because children come to us with all sorts of talents and, and skills, and, and they also need different supports. So, being able to, to, to offer that, those extra supports when, when they're needed. Additional math classes, for example, all children can learn math, some just need a little bit more time. And I do believe factoring is fun, so, just to put a shout out there for math. And making sure that we have all these other opportunities. The AP courses are actually a wonderful example of, of giving access to some of these high-level courses. And we've done very, very well, that, actually, the staff has done very, very well. And actually, won an award for, from the College Board as Small District of the Year for AP classes. Not only did we increase the participation, we also increased the success rate. So, that's really showing that the staff and the district is doing what they can to support in these higher level, these more rigorous courses, and we should continue to do so.
Thank you. Hala?
If I were to be re-elected onto the school board, I would have my priorities set around equity, excellence, and transparency. I believe in making sure that all our students are getting equitable opportunities for success. And at the board level, that looks like policies that allow for that. And so, I would be looking at keeping up the, the, keeping up and supporting the Anchor Program, other programming for special ed students, the Avid Program, personalized learning, one-to-one technology where students carry around their own devices, college in the schools, AP, just to name a few. These are important, it's important for all students to get equitable opportunities for success through these and other ways. I believe in closing the achievement gap while still challenging and supporting all of our students. It's not okay that some students achieve at lower levels based on their ethnicity and background. I believe in closing that gap, but not just by improving the achievement of the people, of the students at the bottom, but by also increasing the achievement of the students at the top by further challenging them while still supporting the students who are struggling. We need to set up our students for excellence in college, career, and community. We need to maintain transparency in our work so we can appropriately involve stakeholders to the extent that we can.
Thank you. I will tell you, we are getting lots of great questions from the audience, and I am in the process of compiling those. But before we start with audience questions, I have one more question that's on our list of, of questions that we want to... of, of questions that we wanted to start with. And as the moderator, I'm going to break the rule and ask Dawn to give each person, I'm going to say maybe two and a half minutes to respond, because this is a really important question, and I think each of you needs to have an opportunity to fully explain your position. So we'll give you a little bit of extra time, and I believe, Molly, we're starting with you. The Columbia Heights School Board voted to put a bond referendum on the November ballot with three separate questions. Can you please tell all of us, all of us whether you support these three questions? Why or why not?
I certainly can. I have been a very big advocate of, of this referendum from the beginning of the time that I've been hearing about it. We have some significant needs in our district, and all three of these questions are important. It, it hurt our district a lot last year when this didn't pass, and at the board level, we decided that yes, we needed to put it back on. I was one of the people that did initiate the conversation about splitting it into three questions, and I know that was a really hard thing for some people to hear because people didn't believe that we should have choices, that if this is a need, that we put it all together. My biggest concern is that we make sure that we're listening to the public and that we're, we're hearing what, what people are saying, and I, I'm, I'm very hopeful and optimistic that we will get at least, I shouldn't say that, that North Park will pass. We, we really need North Park to be a sound structure, to have the programming that's appropriate. There are so many different things over there that are, that are inadequate, as far as I'm concerned. They need to have that library space. They need to have special ed classes that are appropriate. If anyone is, is questioning whether or not this is appropriate, I encourage people to go over there and look. The, the teachers and staff over there are, are very open to that. The, the different, all the different things, the lunchroom. We really need to have a bigger, appropriate space for lunchroom. And first and foremost is the security of that building. In this day and age, it's, it's not fair to that district to not have that safe entrance for school for their children when they're dropping them off every day. It needs to be equal to what our other schools have, and it should, it should be that no matter what. In addition, the PAC, the equipment that we're using in there is actually borrowed, borrowed equipment. It could be so much better. There's a lot of different parts of that, those other questions that are, would be really big values to our district without that much money being added on. In addition to having that extra space from the gym, the amount of money that we'd be spending to get that extra space for performances, I'm sorry, or community events would be so valuable, and again, the, the dollar cost is really minimal compared to adding a whole new facility or things like that. Thank you, Dawn.
That's it. Thank you. Laura?
Ditto. And, we're just gonna go with "and." The needs of North Park have been very apparent in this district for quite a number of years, but the cost involved with the facility there and the way that it's built into the hill were, were so extraordinarily expensive when we were on the downside in the recession to ask the community to, to be able to support that. In addition to that, the initial plans that we, we had over there were much more expensive than the three questions combined. So we finally got it to right size and right place, and we really need to do something about the security of the building over at North Park. The, North Park has to pass. The, the building needs to be updated. The spaces for the special education program that we have over there, which is the only one at the grade school level, needs to be appropriate for the students that it's serving and for the staff. There needs to be proper kindergarten pla, kindergarten spaces and preschool, like we have at the other two buildings. The other two buildings would not be able to handle an additional two-hundred-and-fifty students without increasing the size of those buildings. And that would also require a bond, a voter-approved by the public. It would cost more than just making that space appropriate. I'm not very much fond of the, the parking lot, the playground, and the buses all sharing the same space. That needs to be addressed, and we're not do, we, we really do need to update some of the systems that are in there. That being said, North Park has to, has to pass. It is really necessary. The other two questions, I, I believe they're also needs of the district, is being able to update the, the PAC. That equipment is borrowed. It is taking up space in there, and in addition to that, our stage is also not ADA compliant. And we want to make sure that we have access for all of our students and all of our staff in, into that space. And the community uses that as well. That is the one space that the community also has access to as well. In addition to that, the, the additional stage in the, in the auditor, and the, sorry, cafeteria.
Great. Thank you. Hala?
Yeah, I have been a proponent of splitting up these three, because I heard from a number of people in the community that that's important for them. I would love for all three of these to pass, but we can't do an all or none. We have to be able to work with the resources we have and work with our community. It was a big wake-up call in November when the community didn't pass it. And for me, that tells me that we need to look at how we're communicating with our constituents. We need to look at our transparency. Are we being open enough? Are we being clear enough about what we're doing, what our intentions are? Are we reaching out to the community, not sitting here waiting for them to come find out things? I think we need to do better there. When it comes down to the specific parts that we're talking about, North Park, not a question in my mind. This is an equity issue. Students need to be able to not risk their safety when the buses are coming around. They need to have designated art spaces, special ed spaces that make sense for their needs. They need to have a library that's meaningful. They need to have a secure entrance, and it's, it's sad that we even have to really talk about a school needing a secure entrance in this day and age. They need to have a lunchroom and a gym that are separate, not a cafeteria. There's so many things that these students need, and it's not equitable if we don't provide these things for them. Our PAC at the high school is used by everyone in the district, and it's used by everyone in the community as well. It is our PAC, and everything requires updating. It needs to be updated. We need to keep it ADA compliant, because again, that's an equity issue. Having, addressing these issues is an equity issue. That's how we can make sure that all of our students get equitable opportunities for success. It's not going to be easy to pass this. I feel like as a school board, we need to do a lot more work with reaching out to the community and connecting and finding out what was wrong last time and what we need to do better.
Thank you. William?
I don't think the group's gonna like me, but anyway, it's gotta be said. I think the, the band and the arts, that's a want. It's not a need. It's a want. The, as far as North Park School goes, a couple of things there. As everybody knows, the, the, the school population has decreased. We had to lay some teachers off. There's some funding issues. We're gonna be hitting some headwinds here. And the thing is, I looked at that North Park, and, and it's about twelve thou, twelve million, five hundred thousand, another, almost six million to upgrade the, the other stuff that needs to be done, maintenance. That, we're hitting eighteen million dollars on that building, okay? It was built in nineteen sixty-six. It's fifty-two years old. If you do a fact-cost index on that building, you hit eighty-seven percent. Okay, what does that mean? If you hit one, you replace the building. So you're, you're pouring money into a building that we may not need in the future. Another thing, we have about a thousand sixty-six students that come to our school, out of district, come to our district, and good thing we got them, because they bring thirteen million dollars with them. If we didn't have that, we would be hurting. So we gotta think of this. The school, the senior high, there's nine hundred kids in there, and that's ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. When I went to school there, it was tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. My class was four hundred and seventeen. There was over fifteen hundred kids there. So I, I don't understand why we can't move things around a little bit, and what I would recommend, if, if we really need North Park, let's really consider building a new school. At least you got a new school. You build it the way you want it. You know? I, I just don't understand pouring that kind of money into an old school building.
Where else are you gonna put the kids?
I just told you. There's only nine hundred kids in a senior high. It can hold fifteen hundred to twenty-two hundred. In the nineteen seventies, there's twenty-two hundred kids in that school. So anyway, I'm not against it. If, I, the, the community is great. If there's a real need, the community will step up, but this wasn't thought through. This, okay.
Thank you. I'd like to just remind people in the audience, if you have questions, please write them on a card and hand them in. We will not be taking questions directly from the audience, but they'll be coming up here through the moderator. We're going to lighten things up just for a minute, because we've had some really important questions, and appreciate all of your responses. This question comes from the audience. Given that we know that lifelong readers are also lifelong learners, please tell us what would the last book that you read was and what types of books you like to read? And my notes say that this question starts with Laura.
I love to read. I, I think the last book that I read was Dragon Girl. And I also read one of my daughter's books. I believe it was called, she, she read it in fifth grade, but I, I rather enjoyed. I can't remember what the name of it was. Generally speaking, I like to read fantasy, science fiction, horror, not really so much on romance. I like reference books. I, yeah, I like to read.
Excellent. Thank you. Hala?
Right now, I'm reading on Kindle. I didn't want to pick up my phone when Laura was speaking. It would have been too disrespectful. I'm reading on Kindle, and I'm reading this book that I just can't put down, and I have to force myself. It's called The Survivor's Guide to Family Happiness. It's about a woman who was adopted and then later was looking for her biological family. The book I finished before that was Every Fifteen Minutes, and it was about a psychiatrist who had a patient who had, that he got heavily involved with his life and ended up getting him, and, yeah, I just, I love reading, and I have to be careful when I read, because I can sit down and ignore everything else and, until I finish the book, so.
Thank you. William, how about you? The last book you read?
Atlas Shrugged. It's a, it's a real short little book, yeah, about a thousand pages. So anyway, it's really good. I recommend it to everybody. It, it, written by a woman. She, she lived under communism and socialism. She spells it out, and it's good reading. Once you start reading, you can't stop. The other book was The Ascent of Money. I kinda like that one. It kinda tells the history of money and how it developed and how the banks developed and how a certain group of people really got rich.
All right. Thank you. Molly?
Yes, so the last book that I read would have been last night with my son Kobe. If anyone knows him, I don't know if we're supposed to say our children's names. I hope that's okay. He's seventeen years old, and he loves trains, and so it would have been an encyclopedia about trains. I don't know the title exactly, but it was talking about BNSF and train engines and locomotives and all of that good stuff. I do, I am raising the poor children. They live with me all the time, and so most of my experience with books has been children's books over the last several years, between a career being on the school board and some of the activities I do. I do occasionally like to read Nicholas Sparks, so I think the last one I actually read for myself was probably the best of me. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question also comes from the audience, and this question, we will be starting with Hala. Urban schools are struggling to recruit and hire and keep teachers that are representative of the diversity of the student body. What ideas do you have for increasing the diversity of school staff in Columbia Heights through staff, volunteers, and/or community leaders?
Yeah, that's, that's a really hard one. That's been one of my priorities, to recruit staff that is, that its diversity is more representative of our students' population. We can only do so much when there isn't that much diversity and, and the educators coming out, getting their teaching licenses and being available. But there are some things we can do. I've worked a little bit with having our, having our district recruit with the colleges and the teacher licensure programs before they graduate the students, to try to get people that way, to reach out, to work with organizations, and create partnerships with inner-city and urban organizations, so we can access people that way. Even if we don't have a diverse staff, it's important to continue to work on it, and it's also important to look at other ways we can work. It's, it's important to have diversity, but it's also important to look at making sure that our curriculum is relevant to the students, that the curriculum reflects the diversity, and that as a school and district, we prioritize issues of equity.
Thank you. William?
I think we need to support the teachers more. They're in charge of the classroom, and there's getting to be, I don't know, too many reasons why the kids do what they do. I, I think a little more discipline's in order. When a teacher says, "Be quiet," you be quiet. When a teacher says, "We're doing the assignment," you do the assignment, you know, get up and walk out and, and cause problems. So anyway, what do I think could help? And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stress this. I don't know if people have read Columbia Heights Policy 413 on harassment and violence. Well, there's another one out there, the, the bullying one, I think it's 513. But anyway, that's a watered, watered-down, subjective individual, puts all the responsibility onto the parent and to the child, where 413 puts it all on the principal, to do the paperwork, to do the complaint, to follow up on it. They don't, they don't tell the parent, "It's up to you to go talk to the principal. It's up to your child to fill out the forms." No, 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 no. There's discipline in 413 for the principals for not doing this. So read it if you haven't.
Thank you. Molly, again, the question is, urban schools are struggling to recruit and hire or keep teachers that are representative of the diversity of the student body. What ideas do you have for increasing diversity in school staff, volunteers, and community leaders?
Thank you. One of the programs that I know that we are trying to begin and starting to work on is the Grow Your Own Teachers, where we're encouraging our own students to go off and get their education and possibly come back to Columbia Heights and do some of their student teaching, and then hopefully moving into positions. I can speak to a couple of the children that I know that graduated this year that are looking to do that. I think that that would be one of our best bets, because they know this community, and they, we have, we have the opportunities right here with our, our diverse students. I do want to take a second, though, to acknowledge that the staff that we have in this district are incredible. I think that they go above and beyond to make sure that they're doing their professional development and that they understand where our kids are at. I think that we, like I said, we have a wealth of knowledge with our, our teachers and, and their awareness of the students that they're serving, so I don't want to minimize that at all, but I think just continuing professional development for that as well.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, Molly just said it, the Grow Your Own. I, I do think that that's really important to encourage students to perhaps look at education as a career choice. It, it, it would, it would benefit everybody involved. We're also, I know, trying to do recruitments through job fairs. There's a very high demand for diverse staff and the enrichment that it can bring to a district, so we have a little bit of competition there when we're competing for these individuals. So hoping that we can, you know, really create a great atmosphere for the students that are here. Hopefully, they can get into, get a teaching degree and want to come back and be part of our district. It wouldn't be unheard of for college, college graduates to come back and teach here, so I look forward to seeing what happens in the future. It does take a couple of years, though.
Thank you. William, we're starting with you for the next question. I've heard a couple of you in your responses tonight talk about collaboration. As a former city council member, I am particularly interested in what each of you have in terms of ideas as to how you can lead collaboration or bring about more collaboration, not only with other school districts, but also with our city council, so that you can work together to serve all of the residents of the community.
What I would like to do, if, if I'm fortunate enough to, to be elected, is, is work, work with my fellow school board members and with the city council. and with the city council. And I'd like, it's gonna take a little money to do this, but I would like to talk to all the parents that are sending their kids out of this district. I, I need to know, and I think we all need to know, what's the reason they're not, you know? We're talking forty percent here. You know, we're not talking onesie, twosies here. We're talking forty percent. And so there's an issue. And whatever it is, we'll find out what it is and we'll deal with it. Uh, and then, uh, I keep hearing how good the education is here and it is. I'm, I don't want to put it down, but I looked at, uh, US News, we're unranked. We, we're, we're sitting at the fifty percent. We're about average. How many ki-, okay, here's one. How many National Merit Scholarships has Columbia Heights got? Okay, here's another one. Are we measuring how many kids that graduate in, in, uh, 2014? How many, what percentage of them got the college degree? That's the real measurements. All this other stuff, it's good, it's fun, I like it, but those are the two measurements you really look at. So, and we need more trades. I, I don't see any industrial arts. Everybody can't be good at college, you know? And they need it, need to, uh, get their hands into a trade and, and there's good money in it.
Thank you. Molly?
Thank you. I think that one of the things that I do bring to the table is, um, some communication skills. I think it's important to, to be able to, um, sit at the table and be able to listen to everyone, hear everyone, and be able to respond in a non-confrontational way. Um, I think that it's also important to be a leader in the community, someone that's able to connect with families. Um, as a school board member, we don't have direct partnerships with the city council. Um, but I think that there's a lot that's already going on and we're always looking at that as a board as a whole. Um, when you're elected to the school board, you're not an individual member. So, so what we do is the board as a whole all the time and we're talking about those collaborations. We're talking about what can we do? What kind of partnerships can we support the district on? Um, some of those current programs are with the, the recreation department, the library, um, the police department. We have excellent collaborations and so we're always as a board looking at those things.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, um, collaborations. Um, we've had in the, in the recent past, we've had, uh, collaborations on, um, like the Highlander Center. Um, uh, we did some work with the pedestrian bridge. Um, there's a lot of work that's done with, uh, Safer, Safer Streets, um, that has been coming in. And that's a, that's a, a local group, um, that has brought their concerns to us. Um, the police department's been an amazing support and all of the volunteer work that they do here and supporting the kids. Um, Anoka County, uh, Blooming Heights, uh, 916 and the fourteen, um, different school districts there that we can collaborate with on specific projects. Um, we do, um, uh, a lot of community surveys. Actually, 916 actually provides some of that for us. Um, so, um, and I'm, I'm looking, city council, um, we've, uh, I mean, the Columbia Heights School District is the same size as, you know, it's just a little bit bigger than the city of Columbia Heights, but all of Columbia Heights is in the district. So we can definitely work together there. I'd love to see some, um, opportunities maybe come forward on some other things we can do. Oh, and, um, the Peace Tower, I believe that was also a collaboration between the art department, um, the students there, um, over by, uh, Housat Park. And that was amazing, so.
Thank you. Hala?
So it's, it's really important to collaborate, uh, not just with other school districts and other educational resources. Um, that's actually the easy part to, you know, work with, uh, 916 and others. It's very important to collaborate with the city, with other community organizations. Um, and that can only happen effectively if we focus on being transparent and open. Um, we don't have to do things on our own as a school district. We need to partner with other people and other groups who can help us do those things. We can't do this if we're, if, if, if we're closed off or trying to do things on our own. That said, it's important to understand that as a school board, from a legal perspective, we don't operate as individual school board members. It is a little bit different than city council members. Um, we only operate as a unit. So, um, there have been times where, uh, community members have been frustrated because individuals of us haven't done our own collaborations and we're supposed to operate as a unit. That's how we function the most effectively. Uh, so I believe that being the most open and transparent and communicating with our stakeholders is the biggest way to do that.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Molly. Test scores are one, uh, method of assessing a school or school district's success. What are other methods that you think are important to look at when you're evaluating the success of our district?
I think the biggest one would be student growth. Um, I think that you need to look at where students come in and then where they're moving. Um, and that they're always moving forward. We need to recognize, and I think we do do a good job of recognizing, that students come to our district with varying abilities, varying backgrounds, um, lots of different factors, traumas, all, all sorts of issues, concerns that, that maybe we didn't as adults have to deal with. Um, and our student population is doing a lot of that growth. Um, in addition, I think that if you were to just see, um, and, and know our student body um, a, a, and see the people that they're becoming, it's not just about education here. Our students are learning every day how to get along in society as it is. Um, there's so many valuable lessons that they're learning. I hear about the kids, the kids talking about, you know, their friendships and it, it's a different place in Columbia Heights um, than in a lot of other schools in the state. Um, but again, it would just, to me, it would go back to growth.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, test scores are certainly important, but, um, growth, um, from where they are to where they, they need to go, we need to look at that kind of, um, are we making extra, extra ground up? You know, because if a student comes to us with two or three years behind in some skills, we want to know that we're not taking two or three years to catch, to start catching up. Um, and they've done a great job of providing those additional supports here. Um, for example, double doses of, um, of both math and I believe English as well, um, are, are being done to, to be able to, um, to excel in that growth and bring them up to the, to the, uh, to the level that they need to be. Um, test score, test scores are a snap, a snapshot in time. You know, um, they're, they can be varying upon a lot of different factors, you know? Um, sometimes kids just have an off day and sometimes kids just come in and they just completely nail it. So it's just a, it's just a measurement. It's a little dipstick. Um, but, um, I, I know that it's also an important measurement. But we really need to, to make sure that the kids go where they need to go. It's okay to admit where you are. It's not okay to stay there.
Thank you. Hala?
Yeah, so as an educator, I don't like standardized tests. But, um, standardized tests are a reality and we have to work with them. Um, that said, I feel like what's more important than just looking at proficiency levels um, for certain subjects, uh, from year to year is to look at the growth. Are students making growth? Because like Molly was talking about, you get students from all different situations and backgrounds. And the important thing is, are we moving the needle? Are we making a difference? And then are we making a difference in a way that is not predictable and connected to the students' races and backgrounds and diversities? It needs to be that all students can be successful and it needs to be that all students can improve their learning, um, irrespective of where they come from or how they look. Um, so test scores and student growth would be more the quantitative way. I also feel like it's important to look qualitatively, to look at student experiences, family experiences, the teacher experiences. There are a lot of, um, surveys out there, program evaluation type things that can be done to evaluate how things are going in schools. And, um, they give very good results. And essentially, I'm looking to see if we can get our students ready for college, career, and/or community.
Thank you. William?
Um, yeah, test scores are, are an indicator. Uh, but they're, they can be a good indicator of how the school's doing for academics. We keep talking about the kids going to college, going to college. Well, if, if you're not prepared for college, I, I'm guaranteeing you, they're not going to get that four-year degree. Okay? But what I, what I want to see and I don't see is industrial arts. How, how are kids gonna know they like machine shop? There is no machine shop. How are they gonna know they like wood shop? Be a carpenter, be a cabinet maker. No, no wood shop, okay? There's different things they need to be exposed to to see if they like it and make a career out of it. You know, everybody can't go to college. And even those that do, they get degrees, they can't even find a job. They got a degree, wow, that's nice. No job. So what I'm saying is, is I, I like the academics, but the top twenty percent, uh, you know, that, that's probably the ones that are going to college and do well. But what about the mid-group and the lower group? They, they need to be exposed to some careers that they can do good in. And it, if you're not exposed to it, unless, unless your parents are, are plumbers or electricians, you're just not gonna know. So, there you go.
Thank you. I would like just to remind the members of the audience, we still have about thirty minutes left. We have lots of questions, but we're doing sort of a last call for questions. So if you have things that you would like to submit to have us ask our candidates, please finalize those questions and hand them in in the next few minutes. Next question, we will start with Laura. Sometimes, as a school board member, you may hear or see misinformation that's being circulated about the school district. How do you, uh, either handle as a current school board member, or how would you propose to handle, if you were elected to the school board, uh, this type of misinformation? And what would you try to do about it?
Well, it's usually, um, I, I guess the way I usually handle it is, is, um, if I, if I, if I know the person who is, who I guess brought up the misinformation, I'd actually just try to contact them and say, you know, do you have any questions? I don't think you have ever, all the information there. Because I don't, I don't generally believe that people do things for bad intentions. I usually just think that they just don't have enough information and it's my responsibility to make sure and provide that and, um, hopefully, uh, correct the record in the process.
Thank you. Hala?
Yeah, if, um, I saw that there was misinformation circulating, if it was on a personal level, I would address it right there. Um, if I didn't have all the data, which happens sometimes, I would let them know that something seems off and I'll get back to them with information. I never claim to know everything or have access to everything, but I know where to find the information. Um, if I notice that this is a pattern, that I'm hearing a lot of this, seeing a lot of it online, I would definitely work with the rest of the board and the superintendent to set up something so we can reach out to the community. That still feels kind of reactive. I would like that when we're trying to do something, we start out with the community. As an organization, or not, as a school board, the onus is on us to reach out to our constituents and to reach out to the community and involve them in the decision. There's always gonna be some level of misunderstanding or misinformation, but it's a lot cleaner when we can prevent it rather than respond to it.
Thank you. William?
Uh, it's an old cliche, it's, uh, communication, communication, communication. So if some people have a misunderstanding, then if I was part of the school board, I'd have to say, well, we didn't get that point across very good. And then we'd have to, to talk to, to our constituents and, and I'd be open, you know, that they can call me, you know, if they got issues. I don't have any problem. Uh, we can agree to disagree. But, uh, I think we all want what's best for the students. I think we do. So, I don't think that's the issue. It's just how do we get from point A to point B? And, and you have to be very clear because people tend to hear what they want to hear. Okay? So what we gotta do is break through that and say, here's the facts. These, these are based on, on, on solid facts. And then we'll talk about it and how we get there. But I think we all want what's best for the kids. I just happen to think we should spend a little more towards the, the group that isn't in the top twenty percentile. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Molly?
So social media in Columbia Heights is definitely a unique thing. I think that there's a lot of, um, of different forums that are being used. And it's tricky as a school board member. Um, it's very tricky because again, when you're elected to the school board, you're one person. So you want to make sure you're not trying to represent the school board as a whole on social media, um, individually. Um, I think that one of the things that we need to do again is communication. Um, oftentimes, if I see something, of course, if I know that person directly, I would go to them and, and have a conversation about that. Um, sometimes it's, it's bringing it to the admin and, and making sure that maybe the district clarifies something. If it can be done on the website or different things like that, depending on where the information is. Um, in addition, I think that we've talked as a board about how we can get out in front of it. Um, we need to do a better job of that. I don't think that there's anyone here that doesn't agree with that, that there's certain things that we need to do a little bit better on. Um, another way is just by communicating with some of my, um, my peers, my, uh, or people I know in the community that have a strong presence on social media and having them maybe, maybe put some information out as well. Um, so that can, that can be helpful too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question, we're starting with Hala and I'm going to come, combine a few questions. So this is going to have a couple of parts. So this will, uh, be maybe a little more challenging. But this relates to school choice and parents who send their kids to schools that are, um, not in our district. First, what are your thoughts about the, uh, the right that parents have to, to choose to send their kids to schools outside of the district? Second, do you have a sense as to whether or not the number of kids who, or the, the community members who go to school outside of our district, is that more than other districts our size or about the same? And third, what would you tell parents to encourage them, uh, to send their kids to our district?
What was that last part?
What would you tell parents to encourage them to keep their kids in the district or from outside the community to send their kids to our district?
Okay, so, school choice. So this is where it gets really political. I'm a parent of four kids. I believe that as a parent, my primary job and responsibility is to watch out for my kids. And if I feel like their needs are going to be met in another school, then they're going to another school. And I know this is extremely unpopular right now, but when you're a parent, you have to do what's right for your kids. Part of what's been right for my kids is to come to the high school here. And how Columbia Heights compares to other districts, it's, from what I've seen, it's very similar. It's very similar. Um, a lot of urban, inner city, or first ring suburb, um, districts have the same type of dynamic. Some kids leave, some kids stay. Um, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's roughly the same type of dynamic. Every school district is struggling to hang on to students, to hang on to the resident students. Um, what would I tell parents to encourage them to bring their kids here? I would highlight all the really good things. And I do that all the time. I highlight all the good things that I see. Um, when I take some of my kids outside the district, it's because that meets their needs. It doesn't mean that that's what everybody needs to do. It has to do with very specific needs.
Thank you. William?
Uh, school choice. Uh, I'm for it because it's bailing Columbia Heights out. Uh, but those kids, uh, come from Indianapolis and St. Paul, and I don't know if you're aware of this. They've got a big campaign going to pull them kids back into school in St. Paul and Minneapolis. They've realized they're losing millions and millions of dollars. They're losing, for every kid they, they, uh, gain, they, they lose twenty. So how long do you think their schools are gonna hold up? In Columbia Heights here, we got forty percent that don't attend this school. Okay? That's, that's what's making it hard for these bonds referendums to go through. You got forty percent that their kids go to another school. And, uh, I don't know about you, but, uh, if my kids are going to another school, I don't know if I want my taxes raised. And then, then the kids that are in here bringing money to the school, which is a good thing, is, is, uh, their parents can't vote because they don't live in this district. So you put those two things together and then you got people that are retired on a fixed income. Wow, it's hard to get referendums through with that, I would think.
Thank you. Molly?
So school choice, at the end of the day, honestly, it doesn't really matter what I think. I think that we, we need to make sure that we're doing a good job of educating the kids that we have in our district. Um, there's a lot of flight from one district to another within the, the Minneapolis and St. Paul area. Um, it's not uncommon. I think that we would see, if we looked at, um, the numbers, very similar results to maybe Brooklyn Center and Richfield. Um, I don't think it's uncommon. Um, the easy part of this question is why to send your kids to Columbia Heights. Um, again, I go back to the teachers. We have, um, some of the best teachers, I believe, in the state of Minnesota here in Columbia Heights. Um, we also have great programs. We have so many activities and arts. I think that's one of my favorite things to highlight is that every child, if you attend schools in Columbia Heights, um, you attend schools in Columbia Heights, you can participate in programs and activities. Any child that wants to play on the football team can do so. I think there's only one sport at this time that has tryouts, and that's basketball. But the programs, the arts, as much as we put into that, the music, band, there's just a wealth of opportunities. In addition to that, we are so fortunate to have college in our schools right now. Our kids that we know don't have every opportunity to get to college, maybe they might not have transportation, different things like that, that would be barriers, can take those college classes if they're able to in our schools at no cost to them. So that's a huge opportunity as well.
Thank you. Laura?
Okay, well, let me see, three parts here. School choice. I think choice is great and I believe that Columbia Heights school districts are the right choice. I choose to send my kids here. We have a lot of competition in this area. And look at how many people actually want to send their children here and support the district. Everybody that's here wants to be here. And I think that definitely creates the community that we love. The second one, I'm sorry, I missed the second part of the question.
How do you think we compare to other districts?
You know, I'm not really sure because I don't think that there's much of a comparison. I hear some districts are a little bit more isolated, where the opportunity, they might be very geographically large, where there just isn't the ability for families to send their children elsewhere. So needless to say, they would have less of a movement among the districts. And, but we're so close into the city and there's, I mean, within just two miles, we've got like five, six different districts, parochial schools, charter schools, I mean, and it's not very far away. And even if you get on the bus line, you even have access to more. This is the right, oh, small class size, programming, college in the schools, avid arts, I mean, all sorts of different opportunities in a district this small where you can know everybody. I think that's the biggest deal.
Thank you. I think we are on William next for the question. We've heard some of you talk about the importance of electives and industrial arts, physical education, music in curriculum. Please tell us your understanding of the scope of these programs that are currently offered and whether you support maintaining or expanding those programs.
I think the programs are pretty good. You know, like I mentioned, the sports, when they got 72% participation, so obviously the kids love it. And that's a good thing because, you know, they get to know each other, they just form bonds that are a lifetime. And school isn't just academic. But having said that, as I mentioned before, you know, your top 20% do real good in college. Okay? But the more average person, not so much. Okay? You can try. But what I'm getting at is, we need to present opportunities. What I'd like to see expanded is industrial arts. And the reason for that is you make good money in it. That's $60,000 to $100,000 a year jobs. These ain't little jobs. And then if you own a company, you become a millionaire. I know a few of them. So, I mean, college is good. And I understand why teachers and academic people push education because that's how come they're successful. You know, it's just common sense. But we have to think beyond that and offer opportunity to the kids that, you know, college is a little hard, you know, so, yeah. And some people are so good with their hands, it's just unbelievable, you know? So, good way to make money.
Thank you. Molly?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion this evening about different types of curriculum, including industrial arts, physical education, music. What are your thoughts about the current offerings? And do you think they should be maintained, expanded?
Okay. I think every year, as a board, we review the curriculum. We are looking at what classes, the admin team brings it to us, what classes maybe don't have higher participation than others. And they're looking at changes every year. So that is something that we're constantly reviewing. As far as I know, I'm very impressed with the engineering program as well as the arts programs in Columbia Heights. Physical education, there's also lots of different ways kids can get those credits and figure out how they're going to get their bodies moving and stay healthy. It doesn't have to be just a standard gym class. They have a lot of opportunities and different ways to do that as well. In addition, the band and the music programs are huge. They're busting at the seams here. And I think that we do a great job of offering those classes as electives, too. And creatively. It's not just standard. It's not standard band and choir. It's a lot of additional things on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I love, I've always loved the engineering course. I think that that is a great way of kids putting that hands-on experience and being able to solve problems. In addition to that, they can also do collaboration, which is extremely important also, I believe, in the workforce. I think in just about any job or any career path that you would choose, collaboration plays a big key in problem solving. And the engineering course is a fun way and an educational way to be able to accomplish that. Our arts programs are absolutely astonishing considering the size of our district and just how much our students participate in these expressive classes is just truly amazing. And that's why, one of the reasons why I definitely supported the additional bond questions because they are bursting at the seams. Let me see, what else? There are so many good opportunities and I support all of them. College in the school, I think, again, I could just keep going back to that, having access to that, to the concurrent, the concurrent credits is a really wonderful thing.
Thank you. Hala?
I believe it's really important to, at the very minimum, maintain our arts, music, sports, FIED programs, our electives, engineering, industrial tech, industrial arts, as wide a spectrum as we can maintain is absolutely essential. And I believe that we should expand them to the extent that's financially feasible. Because students are people. They have, they need to have sparks. They need to be able to have hobbies and things that make them want to get up in the morning. They need to have things that can help them self-actualize in what they're doing. It can't just be academics. These things help them build their social skills. And then these, having these electives helps our students be well-rounded. And when I say electives, I mean like sports as well, arts, music, sports. Having those helps students be well-rounded and it helps them have excellent college outcomes for those who will go to college, for those who go straight to a career. It helps them be more successful. And then for people who go straight into the community, it also helps them be successful.
Thank you. Molly, we're on you for this one. As a school board member, you would be elected by voters who live in the school district. However, if elected, you'll not only represent the voters, but also the young people who are not old enough to vote in the election. How do you plan to connect with those young people who, for many of them, you will be one of their first introductions to the political process and to the representative form of government? As a school board member, how do you plan to connect with the kids?
By being present. I think that the biggest thing you can do is to show up. And I try to do that the best I can. I believe that it's important to be present in your kids' lives and in their educations, but also to be present at the schools. It's important for the teachers to know you. And I think that I do that as a parent, but I also try to make sure that I know my children's peers, their friends, their classmates. That's, like I said, one area that is very important to me. I'm around youth probably more than adults and I like that. It's okay. There's great kids in this district and I think it's, I benefit more than they would ever benefit just by being around them. So, thank you.
Laura?
Oh, this is, there's opportunities at a lot of, a lot of the different school functions to interact with the kids and to talk about their art projects or their musical aspirations, to compliment them on the amazing solo that they did over at Highland or the work that they've done on a play. It's, it is really truly an honor to be able to be at that point in their life where they put themselves out there and they can be successful and they do things that they didn't know that they were capable of and their eyes light up. It's truly amazing. I have had the opportunities in the past to be able to do some reading with the kids. That was, that was a nice year. I helped to do some assessments and that was, that was kind of fun. You know, I'd like to have the opportunity to do that again and regardless of whether or not I'm on the board, honestly.
Thank you. Hala?
Connecting with the kids is the reason why I'm in education because I can't imagine my life outside of an educational institution. I love kids and I feel like the best way to connect with them as a board member is to just be at the activities, be at the events, connect with my kids' peers and their friends and listen to what they're saying. We can't presume to have all the answers. We can't top-down things and tell them the way things need to be. We need to hear them. It's about them. Just like we ask our teachers to run democratic classrooms, we need to behave in that way with our kids, with the kids, all of our kids. And to just talk to them and hear what they're interested in and share things that I'm interested in that they have, just to make those genuine human connections. When, in my job, I work with teachers and I help, I coach them and I observe them and coach them and help them improve. And one thing I realize sometimes when teachers focus too much on just their content is that they're forgetting that they're teaching human beings, individual people. And just to connect with them as human beings and hear from them, that goes really far.
Thank you. William?
I think the biggest part is to be at the events and make yourself available and actually listen to what they have to say. Be in a conversation with them. And then, and then ask if they've got questions or if they need help with something or do they have concerns. But the big thing is, again, communication. You got, you can't ignore them for a year and think everything's going to be fine. You know, you got to talk to them as often as you can. And like I say, but, but you got to, you got to let them know that there's certain things you got to do, you know, to be successful. And, you know, it's just that simple, that there's certain things you got to do to be successful. And just keep, keep talking about that, keep talking about that. And as long as you build a trust factor with them, you don't think they're listening, but they're listening. So, and success is long, continuous performance. That's how you be successful. You do it, you do it.
Thank you. We're going to close with one last question. And this is a question that we will ask for all of you. I will tell members of the audience, thank you first for providing so many great questions. And while we have not had a chance to get through all of them, I know that I can speak for all of the candidates sitting at the table, that any of them would love to talk with any of you about your remaining questions and provide as much information about themselves or their views as they can. But our last question, and I will ask Dawn to give each person two minutes to respond. If you could tell everyone in the audience and everyone who is watching this candidate forum, if you could pick three words or three phrases to describe you, either that you would use to describe yourself or other people would use to describe you, that would help people understand why you are a great candidate for the Columbia Heights School Board, what three words or phrases would you choose to share with the people here today? And this question, we start with Laura.
Of course. A little goofy. Is that three words? Goofy. And dedicated.
Thank you. Hala?
I'm a really genuine person. What you see is what you get. And equity is one of my really big priorities and integrity is woven into everything I do.
Thank you. William?
Integrity. Consistent. And tenacious.
Thank you. Molly?
I would say committed, caring, and responsibility. A sense of responsibility.
Great. Well, I'm going to say I'm impressed with all of you because none of you required the full two minutes to answer that question. So, thank you. Three words. Thank you very much. I know it's difficult to respond all of these questions and think on your feet. We appreciate your time and your commitment to the community and we invite everybody to stay and have some cookies and carry on the conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
[applause]